Hi, we are back with the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, also known as BMZA, and we are going to jump straight into the presentation by Director Witt.
All right, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the committee, other assorted council members. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Becky Witt. I'm the Executive Director of the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, commonly referred to as the zoning board or BMZA. And I will get right into it. Our org chart is not much to look at, so I will keep it pushing. The BMZA is a quasi judicial agency, which means we conduct administrative hearings where we apply the city code to the specific appeals that have been filed with our office. And those appeals are zoning appeals and, to a much lesser degree, alley and footway violation notice appeals. It's the end of the day, towards the end of the day. I don't mind a loopy council. While we are not a court and our proceedings are informal, the board performs many of the same functions of a court. We hear sworn testimony, we deliberate and issue written decisions. We have to apply the law to the facts for every single case as consistently and fairly as we can. For fiscal '26, we have two key goals. We are focused on enhancing the process for self-represented appellants, which is by far the largest category of appellants that we have, by developing new educational resources for them. We recognize that many residents do not have legal representation or any other kind of assistance to go through the process, and so we're trying to create clearer materials for them to level the playing field. We're also working kind of on a similar track to expand access for residents with limited English proficiency, which we talked about last year during our budget hearing. And we're still working on it. It includes providing translation services, making sure our materials are available in multiple languages, and interpreter availability during hearings. This year, in terms of our budget, we're adding one zoning officer position that transitions from temporary ARPA funding to the permanent general fund. The board has historically had five staff members, so it's not really like we're adding a position, but we've lost one position due to a vacancy and a cut during the early pandemic in 2020. This position was added back in 2022, funded by ARPA, with the understanding that the position would be added back as a general fund position when ARPA funds ran out, which is what has happened here. Our average time from filing an appeal to a public hearing did increase in fiscal year '24. This was due to process changes that you may have heard about, which required us to cap our hearings at 12 cases per docket instead of our previous 20-plus cases. We had to take the time to hear each case in its entirety, and so it took us longer to get to the cases that have been filed. But that wait time has gone back down significantly. In fact, just right now, as a snapshot of what our docket is like, we're scheduling cases that come in right now for July 1st, which is only 33 days from today. Hearings per full-time employee also decrease as a factor of having more full-time employees and also as a factor of being able to schedule fewer cases on a docket because we're hearing every case now. Eighty-nine percent of our decisions that fiscal year were upheld by judicial review, which is above our target, and our average number of days from a hearing to a resolution stayed pretty steady. So just to wrap up here, when I first joined BMZA, there's been a lot of zoning talk lately, especially in the last few months, but certainly since I joined BMZA. And so when I joined BMZA, I assumed that the data in the bulk and yard tables in the zoning code were grounded in science or public health research. Those charts that we look at in the back of the code that talk about things like maximum lot coverage, minimum lot area, the dimensions of a structure, they looked authoritative. But as the variance requests came in, appellants were asking us questions like, well, why am I required to have a 25-foot rear yard, but in our eight, just a couple blocks down, they only need a 20-foot rear yard? Like, what's the health or safety rationale for these different numbers that are in the code? And, you know, you can see them, they look very organized. And the answers are usually just that the bulk and yard regulations tend to match what already exists. So if you're building something in a neighborhood, we want you to be building exactly to match what already exists. And/or you have to draw the line somewhere. Those are kind of the answers that I got back when I was asking other people about where these regulations came from and why are they the way that they are. And so I want to kind of offer that to the council as you're making changes to the code, to think about how you're balancing these different values that are underneath these numbers, values like consistency versus values like building more housing because people need to live. There's a line in a book that I think maybe some of you have heard of or read. It's a little bit become kind of a cult for some kinds of people. It's called "The High Cost of Free Parking" that I refer back to from time to time. And it says, "Precision implies certainty." And so these tables in the back of the code give the impression of certainty, of scientific rationale behind these different bulk and yard regulations. But there may not be a clear justification behind the numbers other than this is what currently exists, which may or may not be a good reason to keep going in a city that really needs development, needs new residents. So like I said, it's about balancing values, predictability, aesthetics versus flexibility in housing access. Those decisions belong to you all. They do not belong to me. I have my opinions as a resident of Baltimore City. But we are trying to enforce the code as consistently as we can. And to that end, you may have noticed that lately I have taken up a practice of emailing council members when the board is unable to grant something. So somebody comes before us, they can't get a variance to build a deck or something like that because their property is not unique. And so in those cases, I've been emailing the council people to say, just to give you the case file, say, hey, your constituent would like to do this project. They can't do it under the code, under the standards that we have. If you would like to change the code so that they can do this project, you certainly are welcome to do that. If you feel like they shouldn't be able to do this project, then that's obviously your right as well. So if you see an email from me pop up in your inbox like that, that is my intention, is to just make sure, because the code can be so abstract when you look at it. It's hard to see how it applies until you see it play out in a specific situation. And some of you I email a lot more than others, so apologies for that. But some of you just have a lot more zoning appeals in your district than others. So yeah, that's the end of my presentation. I hope that my input has been helpful to you. I look forward to continuing that dialogue with you all. And I'll take a seat.
Director Witt, thank you so much for your presentation. We're going to go into committee questions at this time. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for being here. I am one of those council members that you email and certainly have been thinking through what that looks like. And the councilman, I think, is going to talk about a piece of legislation that he's working on that I think addresses what you're trying to do. And I think that's, the dialogue that we're having is important because, you know, who dreamed these up? Who knows what happened? And it's unfortunate that I can't ask my predecessor because she was part of dreaming up some of this stuff. And I don't have her notes. So, well, she didn't leave me with the notes. So that's helpful. But I think, so we do have things to work on. But my question was, we're moving the zoning administrator from housing to planning. And I know the zoning administrator is very separate from the board because the board is basically for anybody who doesn't like what the administrator basically said, it goes to the board. Is this move going to impact you and your office at all, whether it's going to be more efficient because you'll be in the same building, or is the separation like really important anyway? And anyway, I'm just wondering if there was going to be any impact in terms of that move.
That is a great question, and I don't know that I know the answer right now. The function of the office is going to stay the same, obviously. It will just be housing, planning, instead of housing, planning. I think it will make some things easier for us because we have had some communication issues with that office, and we are in constant communication with planning. It's probably the agency that we interact with most. We are basically neighbors in the building. And so I'm hopeful that the move will have some positive changes. But I'm not exactly sure right now what those will be.
Yeah, I was just curious because that is a pretty substantial move for lots of reasons it had to be made, and that's the Vice President's bill to make that official. But it's also in the budget to do that. So I was just curious. And again, I just thank you for answering my emails. Zoning is hard, and it's taken me four years to learn it. I don't think I know half of what I should yet, but we're, I think, getting there. So I appreciate your help. Thank you. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gray.
Hello, Ms. Witt, how are you?
I'm good.
Great. I just wanted to just expound on the point you made about how there are things in our zoning code that's been there, you know, for almost a century at this point that seems to be there only because that was the standard at the time, and they didn't want to change anything. And I just wanted to highlight, when you said something about bulk and yard, and I think you're aware that I have legislation that would give more rights back to our owners and property owners in the case that they want to just add an addition or build something else on their property that they should be able to. So it's exciting just to hear you say that. And it's exciting to see that, you know, across the board, there are a lot of people on board about changing the way that we think about zoning. Because at its core, it is a very restrictive thing, not only for homeowners but for people of color, and that was its intent. And so kind of breaking it apart and thinking about it differently is really important. So I just wanted to say, you know, thank you for saying that on the record and look forward to hopefully, you know, passing that and giving property owners a little more freedom to do what they would like on their property.
Sure. Just to respond very quickly, appreciate that bill because I think touching the bulk and yard regulations has been some sort of like no-no for previous councils. They haven't wanted to get into it. They haven't wanted to actually deal with the specifics of what these different restrictions are. And I appreciate that you're going there and you're willing to put out a proposal of how to change the restrictions so that people can make their homes more comfortable. We see over and over again, people in rowhouses especially, come to us and they want to add a bedroom or they want to expand their kitchen a little bit. These are obviously very old homes. And they can't do it because the code says your house has to stay looking the way that it has. And it seems silly to us, the board members to me, and the case law is very clear, that the way to solve that problem for people is not through variances one at a time, but it's through legislation and changing the rules that apply to everyone. I also think that the zoning code, as it's written, does not necessarily deserve the benefit of the doubt because of its history, its history as being explicitly exclusionary. And so we shouldn't just take for granted that the code as written is good for public health and safety.
Yes, exactly. There are neighborhoods that have illegal additions on their homes. And what's frustrating is, I mean, now with this bill, it would be legal technically, but also we just don't have enough code enforcement or inspectors to even, you know, stop a coordinated effort like this was done to every house. So like, yeah, like people just added these kitchens on. And, you know, now they have these other issues where if you want to get it fixed, then it becomes a problem. And so not only does it just free people to add on, but it actually, you know, allows people the freedom to make additions and do it the right way through permitting without it being restrictive or retroactively, you may be able to get in trouble for something that somebody did 60 years ago. So yes, thank you.
Can I respond to that really quickly? I know this is driving into more of like a conversation than a question and answer, but this is something we see at BMZA all the time, especially with things like illegal conversions of single-family dwellings to multifamily dwellings. We see it all the time. Somebody comes in and they buy a property that looks like a two- or three-bedroom dwelling, and it is set up for that. And then they come to BMZA, and the last legal use is as a single-family dwelling. They may not even be able to use it for that multifamily dwelling, and they have now bought something that they can't use. And it's really frustrating to see it. And that is why I want to make sure that when that happens, that I'm sending that information to the council person for that district to say, hey, this is something that's happening in your district that's keeping property from being used, which is of course something that we don't want to see.
I'm so sorry. One more thing. Maybe if this could be a committee request, are you able to provide in totality but also by district, the number of, I guess, those instances where someone was denied a conversion or denied the ability to, this may be a little complicated, but do something that basically the series of bills are proposing? I don't know how we can officially write that down, but, or maybe we could just work on this offline.
Yeah, maybe. I would love to give you more information. I think our process is very archaic, and so we don't have the ability to pull maybe exactly the information that you're asking for. But it's something that I can try to work on over maybe a slightly longer period of time.
Okay. And we could work on it, just, we could do this offline. I'll touch base with you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're going to go to Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to see you. Two things that are just kind of in the weeds on the report here. You mentioned the zoning officers, and you mentioned kind of the way that the average number of days has risen and fallen because of policy changes and staff capacity, and then also the hearings per full-time employee. I think you mentioned that right now you're scheduling 33 days out. What's, I noticed the target for next year in this fiscal '26 is 75. Is 75 actually the right number, or should it be more aggressive? I'm just curious if that's...
It's really hard to know because it depends so much on the economy. I think right now we're having fewer applications just because people aren't sure, they're just not sure, they're not applying right now. And I've talked to Planning Commission. They're also receiving fewer things that go through Planning Commission too. So I think there's, we're in kind of a weird period. It's also, could be affected by the e-permit system, which is fairly new, and people just not being sure how to apply, or their appeal getting stuck somewhere. So I don't know about, that metric is difficult for me to set a target for because there are so many external factors that affect it. But yeah, given where we are right now, we have a very short time. I'm expecting that to lengthen. So I'm not sure.
And then, I really appreciate that. Maybe the same thing is true also then for the hearings, because all this is volume-driven, right? It's the hearings per staff. I mean, that's, I mean, you have, you have five staff, right?
Yeah.
Is 75, again, I mean, just your sense of whether that's, is that a sustainable number for the staff?
In terms of hearings per officer?
Yeah, hearings per officer.
Or per employee? Yeah, it is very volume-driven and based on, you know, we move faster when there are more appeals to process, and we can take a little bit more time when there are fewer. So it's hard to set, for me to set those metrics because I don't have any control over who's applying and how many of them. But I will say, having fewer appeals right now has given us time to do other things like update our website, to have more educational materials for people, and to actually go through the, go through each case in a little bit more detail. I was kind of describing it to somebody when we, like a year or two ago, when we were seeing many, many more appeals and not being able to carefully process each one. To me, it felt like the episode of "I Love Lucy" where they're at the chocolate factory and they're just like throwing the chocolates, you know, the conveyor belt is going too quickly, and they're like putting chocolates in their hat or whatever. That's kind of how it felt with zoning appeals. Like, we were processing them, quote unquote, but were we doing an adequate job, really? I'm not sure. So yeah, it's kind of hard for me to say like what is a correct number of appeals per staff. But if we come back next year and it's still really slow, then I guess we could talk more about that.
Sure. Well, and it's hard to have flexibility to adjust with volume when we budget so far out, right? And there's so many factors like affecting volume that we have no control over. I wonder too, so I'm looking at the contractual services number went up 41K actual in '24, 57K budgeted this year, 60K next year. What kind of service are they providing? And does that provide some flexibility, right? Is there room in contractual services that could help handle an upswing in number or complexity of cases? But what's, talk us through what those numbers are.
Yeah, contractual services, I think, is just court reporting services for our hearings. I don't think there's anything else except for translation services that would go under contractual services.
Okay. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Schleifer.
Thank you. Have you guys resolved the issue about your meetings not all being broadcasted?
So that is a matter of Charm TV coming to the hearings to record them. I think lately, they've been showing up every, every set of hearings the past like couple months. But it's not really something that I have control over whether they come or not. Sometimes they are preempted by other more important things.
Do you believe your interpretation of the uniqueness law that you have decided to enforce under your tenure disproportionately affects any specific community?
I don't know. I think it probably disproportionately affects people who live in rowhouses because it's almost impossible to make a uniqueness argument. Well, I wouldn't say that. That's too strong. But it's difficult to make a uniqueness argument for a rowhouse when the rest of the houses on the block are basically identical.
So how come when there was a proposal before you by a city employee on Blackstone where every single property, adjacent property on both sides across the street and on that block, every single one of them has been given a variance and has an addition, when you guys rejected his simple addition, which everybody is supportive, the community association is supportive, every single neighbor is supportive, why did you say then on the record that it does, that you've been noticing that, you know, all of these, a lot of these rejections keep happening in specific areas, and you were specifically singling out with my district? Does that ring a bell?
Well, I think there is. I've made a list of the different, now I would need to go back and figure out where it is. I think for the cases that were filed in 2024 of which zoning districts the cases came from, and they're heavily weighted toward, I would say, the First District and the 11th District, but then the Fifth District is pretty high up too. And so I think I was referring to that, the Fifth District being higher in that ranking than I would have expected, given that it's not primarily a rowhouse district, although I'm sure there are rowhouses there.
I mean, that's just, you can go back and watch the tape, but I don't have to hash it out here. But I mean, that's not what was said. And additionally, you, as well as one of your board members, decided that that was going to be a good forum to somehow indicate that their council person, you guys called me out by name, is not supportive of these variances. And if I was, I would support legislation to do that, which is kind of ironic considering I've been pushing legislation for over two years to reverse the discriminatory behaviors of your board and to allow people to invest in their own properties and stay in the city so that the city could get the investment that we need. And so instead of families, especially larger families, predominantly Jewish families that have a lot of kids who've been coming before your board and unanimously, for the most part, have been getting rejected, even though every neighbor of theirs in many different locations have all gotten these variances, I introduced a bill that was drafted by the deputy mayor on behalf of the administration, which then the administration killed. And so I've been pushing that constantly. So for you, your board members, to say anything to the contrary is simply not true. I think people should be able to build these additions. I think people should be able to invest in their own properties. And if we did allow them to do that, I did a little back-of-the-napkin numbers on the amount of money that your board and your decision has costed just in my district alone, and it's millions of dollars. Because when these families go ahead and add an addition, just one example, you take, you take some of these houses, especially the ranchers, it's very common across my district, and you know this, to take off the roof and build a second story. That addition typically costs between $300,000 and $400,000. So when those houses do that, these people are investing their own money, and we're taxing them at a 2% for owner occupied. And so we're getting another $8,000 a year per house without any additional cost or strain on the city system. And so by rejecting that, that's just, that's just free money that we're losing. But what I've seen in my district is a lot of these families, including people who are handicapped and need certain accommodations for their handicap, have had to move out to the county. And the other issue with that as well is that when people move, there's one person in particular that I'm thinking about who moved because of one of the decisions that your board makes. His net income annually is about $30 million, and his income tax used to come to the city. It's no longer coming to the city because he decided that since he couldn't build what he wanted to do and what his neighbors were afforded to do, he moved out of the city. And so when you have people whose now income tax are going to other jurisdictions, that's a huge burden on us. And so I just don't, I just need some more clarity because we haven't gotten it, and I've requested in writing. Have you consulted with anybody before you made that decision to decide that you're going to change the course of how the board operated for the 50 years prior to you getting there?
There's so much to respond to. If I could go back for a second, I'll come back to the question at the end. But a second story would not require a variance. Two stories is allowed in every residential zoning district. So when you're talking about adding a second story, that wouldn't require a variance.
You guys rejected it because you said the house was already at a compliance based on the current code, and so...
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So non-conforming structure couldn't be added to. But actually, as of May 31st or the beginning of June with the City Council Bill 25-006, that wouldn't be true anymore.
So you're saying, starting next week, they can come back?
Yes, they could add an addition to a non-conforming structure, yes.
Okay. And so even if they were denied this year, do, are they able to come back? Okay, and so even if they were denied this year, do, are they able to come back?
Yes.
So that, okay.
Okay, so another thing I wanted to respond to is people with disabilities. So that, there is a route that is different from the variance standard that goes through the Americans with Disabilities Act, that the board actually has heard maybe two cases where the board has granted a reasonable accommodation under the ADA for a person with a disability who needed some sort of addition or ramp or something that wasn't allowed by the zoning code. That is not the variance standard that would apply then, that, that's a different standard. But we have done that before. It's just that people need to raise that as an issue and apply for it in that way instead of applying for it as variance. Because when we are applying the variance standard, the variance standard is about the property itself and not the people living in the property. So we can't take into account things like, um, people with a large family. That is not something that would apply for a variance standard. But under the ADA, we can approve a reasonable accommodation for somebody with a disability. Okay, so coming back to, did I talk to anyone before, um, the board decided to not do the consent docket anymore? Yes. A lot of people.
Okay.
The law department, other attorneys, developers' attorneys, the deputy mayor. I mean, that was two and a half years ago, so it's hard to remember, but yeah.
Okay, so the administration approved you making that decision without, you know, bringing it up to, to the council?
The board can make whatever decisions it wants irrespective of the administration.
Oh, you just said you spoke to the deputy mayor about it.
Oh, yeah, I spoke with him.
And so they were okay with it?
I wouldn't say that he said, "Go ahead," but I spoke with him.
I'm sorry, I missed the specific question, the specific...
Oh, so the specific question, Deputy Mayor, thank you for being here, is... What's that? Oh, we, the, the committee is requesting that you say your name for the record.
Good afternoon, for the record, Justin Williams, Deputy Mayor for Community Economic Development. I apologize, I missed the specific question.
Okay, so Deputy Mayor Williams, the specific question was, prior to the board making the historic failure decision to, um, change the way the board had operated for, for decades, well before both you and I were born, and all of a sudden now enforcing this, a uniqueness standard and using that as an excuse to deny variances across the city. The question was, did they speak to, you know, anybody? Because I know they didn't come to the council, they didn't speak to us. We didn't know about it until we were getting complaint after complaint from constituents. I had asked if they had spoke to anybody in the mayor's office, and the response was the deputy mayor. I assume that would be you.
Correct. So, well, no, I guess my recollection of the events was that the board members, and to be fair to Ms. Whit, it was, I think, the board members themselves decided to stop the practice of having the consent docket. I think in a similar situation where, like you described with the block, Blackstone Street, where it was a similar application that came before them, that there were minor, I'm sorry, there were consent decree cases that allowed people to get extensions in the block. And then a woman came to say, basically, "Hey, my neighbors got approved, why can't I get approved for the same thing?" And that's when the board members, or some of them, were decided, "Hey, that's a good point. Why, we should not have a consent docket, we should be reviewing these cases more strenuously." And that's probably led to the friction where historically, they didn't apply the uniqueness standard. If it was without, if no one opposed, and it was small, that people were preempted. As Ms. Whit has made the point of saying, that doesn't necessarily comport with the law. There should be some review. And so I guess the question, practitioners, myself, as who leans more to pro-development, as my prior background would suggest, lean one way, how you interpret what it means to be unique, but the board members, it seems like, have different interpretations.
Yeah, I, I mean, I wasn't going about the line of, like, interpretation. I understand, you know, we have diverse opinions in this room and that's, that's great. The question was just if they had asked and communicated first. The director said that she had spoken to you prior to it, but you're saying that you heard about it after the fact. So I'm just trying to get some clarity, who knew and when they knew? Because we didn't know until, I didn't know until a gentleman in my district's family reached out and said, "Our dad has ALS and the BMZA just denied his variance to build a ground-level entrance, one room for him to use his wheelchair into." And so that's when I was brought to, into the conversation. And it's been now two years of everything you're aware of. And so that's, that was the question. So you didn't know prior to, prior to them doing that?
That's right, and I guess, to be fair to Ms. Whit, I mean, the timeline can be muddled, but I'm pretty sure, I mean, the, the board decided on their own and they, she definitely reports to the board.
All right, thank you. I'll save my other questions for the next round.
Councilman Blanchard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment, Director Whit, I just want to say that, and sorry for me coming in in the middle of this, but, um, the forthright nature and honest nature that you bring to every single decision that you make and the way you communicate it, regardless of if it's what I want to hear or not, is particularly in, in someone in a position like yours, is tremendously valuable. Just a brief example of that, I had, as you probably remember, with, um, the zoning sort of Omni bill, had, had several folks concerned, community members reach out about the, the variance provision. And your communication on, when you, in the hearing, the translation and landing hearing, when you said, Council, Chair Dorsey had his point, and you were like, "Actually, I'm not sure." And we recessed and you came back and you had that provided that, "Here's why I don't think it's going to have the impact that some people are saying it might have." That made me feel, knowing, like, how you communicate and your character, made me feel really good going in front of my neighborhood association and saying, "Look, I'm not an expert on this. I don't know how state courts adjudicate this stuff, but I know that, uh, the director of BMZA said this and I really trust our opinion, so I appreciate that."
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. And, uh, in, I had a specific case in my district where all of the other residents, and this goes to something that the councilman was talking about, all of the other residents on those two blocks were nonconforming because they had added their structures and somehow it was rezoned or they just did it anyway and they had gotten variances. And then the last one on the block that didn't have that came before the board, right after the, um, decision was made to change the way that the variances were done. And, uh, I actually support the, the decision that you made because it was illegal what we were doing. And now we have structures all over the place. But what you, what you challenged us to do is to figure out, how do we solve it in the code, right? And not necessarily to just allow variances all the time, but like really solve it in the code. So what I did was rezone it to try to get those two blocks to make them all conforming, given the bulk and yard. And, um, what Councilman Gray's bill does is it goes a step further and does exactly what you had just talked about in your, um, entry, which was, "Who came up with these and why is it that way?" And so the new, uh, what his bill does, it goes from, um, with an R7, it allows for 70% of the, um, building to be, or it, the lot area can be covered by 70% building or built, you know, and then same with an R8. So it ultimately solves my constituent's concern and the constituent doesn't have to come to you at all, once this bill passes. And so, um, that way, it's super clear to everybody what needs to happen. And I think it resolves the issues that, uh, it's not perfect. You know, obviously with this bill, we'll go back and forth internally to, or publicly to, um, really see whether these percentages make sense or not. But I think the attempt to try to get this done in a, in a way that we have this, um, discussion in the code is, I think, I, I appreciate that that is what has occurred. And so I just wanted to make sure that the committee understood and the public understood that this particular piece of legislation, I think, resolves those issues. And not in a way that is just sort of piecemeal, piecemeal, house by house, but literally by right, my constituent can build his addition at, he needs 62%. He can do that now, well, once this bill passes. And does not have to come to you, and all those other houses are inconformant. And so, uh, I don't, again, I don't know if you've seen this bill in detail, but if you have any other, you know, thoughts about, you know, how this goes, this, this bill doesn't solve the R6 problem that we have, but that's a different issue that I have to figure out with my colleague. But it at least gets to the, the, the issue of, like, we don't, we don't have to do variances. We can, you know, we can actually solve this problem by actually changing the square footage. So anyway, let me, if you have any thoughts about that.
Yeah, and this is something that, like, like you said, comes up all the time. It just came up last week with the case where there was, uh, there's a block of row houses in Councilman Blanchard's district where there had been various additions and rear decks and different things either applied for and gotten through the consent docket or maybe built illegally, who knows? I didn't go down the whole block, but it did seem like many of those houses did have something that this applicant was applying for and seemed to be the last one on the block who didn't have. And so, yeah, and so she, she was coming and saying, "Well, my house is unique because I don't have this thing, because I am conforming," which is actually unfortunately not, um, a justification for a variance. It, it's, it's a reason to look at the standards. It's not a justification for a variance. And I think this is just the push and pull that we've been having for the past three years that I've been around, where having a conversation with the councilman and explaining this and the councilperson saying, "Well, then, if I change the rules, um, the bulk and yard regulations, then they'll apply to everybody." And I said, "Yes, that's exactly right." And, and that person said, "Well, I don't want them to apply to everybody." And that's, that's gonna, the law applies to everybody unless there's some specific reason why you should get an exception. That's just how it is. And, um, so I appreciate that. And, and that's why I keep, um, providing those examples to the relevant council people because I want to make sure that you know where people are bumping up against the, the boundaries of these bulk and yard regulations and to what extent it makes sense to change them. That's totally on, on you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yeah, what, what training does the board go through before they start voting on things?
There's a standard Maryland, um, like, planning commissions and zoning board training that's online that they do.
So they do one training online? Uh, because from the, the hearings that I've watched, uh, what I've seen is that, with a few exceptions, many of your board members are just not clear on the rules, regulations. They ask more questions than having answers. And it's sort of like feed off of one another instead of, you know, the way the board used to be, where you had people who were very knowledgeable about, um, the industry and who were very well-versed in the rules. People who, uh, when I joined the council, we used to go to the board members of the BMZA to ask them for clarity on zoning questions because they were like, you know, they, they were like dictionaries. They had, they had all the answers on, on every term and they just knew everything. It doesn't seem like that's the case now. And so is that, is that a training they're doing, the standard training that other jurisdictions are doing?
Yes.
Okay. And so do you, i- is this, do you think your board is pro-development or anti-development?
I don't think I can answer that question.
Okay.
I don't think they're either one.
Okay. I mean, because it, it kind of seems like they, they do lean to finding ways, and I watched the BMZA hearings, which is why I was very troubled when a bunch of the meetings were canceled and also the other ones just not put online with, you know, not transparent. And so on that, um, how many meetings have been canceled for, or how many meetings have been canceled, or how many items also have been postponed because of lack of attendance from the board or, um, lack of getting through the agenda? How often is that happening?
I would say, um, and I know that we provided this specific information to you, um, a few months ago. I think, generally speaking...
Just to clarify, um, you guys were, you, you started providing information, but then somebody in the, I think it was in the mayor's office, said that it was going to take more time to get all of the information I requested. I'm still waiting on some of those, uh, some of that information.
Usually, we have to cancel one or two BMZA meetings a year because of people being sick or having a family emergency or something like that. We can't hold hearings if we don't have four members. And we have five board members currently and three alternates. But, um, in the case I think that you're talking about, there was one board member who got COVID and could not come. It was right before the holidays, so it was kind of mid-December. And, um, another board member had a family emergency and so we had to cancel. But it happens sometimes.
Because, because that, uh, the percentage of meetings that you guys have canceled or just not made it through the agenda is far higher than any other, um, any other similar board, just, just for your information.
Well, we always make it through the agenda.
Always? You always, you get, you get through all the items and never make anybody come back?
Sometimes we have to wait on deliberation.
Okay.
So occasionally, but we always get through the, the testimony part to the best of our ability, yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, so you don't make it through, because I know, because I have constituents that have been forced to come back multiple times and they're professionals and they're lawyers and everybody else has to come back multiple times. And so one of the examples I'm getting at also, you, you did something that I've, I've never seen done before and actually is pretty offensive, where you told a Jewish school that, um, one of the conditions, that they would have to meet conditions that have never been required of anybody else ever. And so why, why do you think it's okay to put conditions on a, on a Jewish school but not put those same conditions on any other school, organization, or anything?
So the case that you're talking about is, um, 2024, 192, 5415 Greenspring Avenue, which was a request for a conditional use for a, uh, school, a high school. The appellant, in this case, the school, hired consultants who came in with a list of proposed conditions. I think the list was two or three pages long, full of all kinds of different conditions that they were requesting that the board place on them because of the significant community opposition in that case. There were a lot of people there from the community who were mostly testifying about things like traffic. And so the appellant's consultants that they hired to represent them came in with a list of proposed conditions and the board chose two of those conditions and made those conditions of the approval. That the students would carpool and that there would be a cap on admissions. Those are both related to the traffic issues that the neighbors brought up at the hearing. They were consistent with what was proposed by the school, by the people that the school hired to represent them at that hearing. And they directly addressed the neighbors' conditions about traffic that were raised during the hearing. And the code gives the board the discretion to impose any conditions that it thinks are appropriate and relevant to the request before it. And I, I've, I'm baffled by the idea that the board wouldn't have the right to adopt conditions that the school themselves suggested.
The, the school, the school didn't need any conditions on it. It, it could have gotten approved without anything...
Maybe they could have, but they hired consultants that gave us pieces of paper that said proposed conditions on them with three pages of conditions and the board could have chosen from any one of them or none of them.
So when you have, when you have a neighbor, that, that specific proposal was proposed by a specific person who lives across the street from the school. When, when a, a neighbor or community comes invol- and, and makes proposals that are... that are offensive, um, regardless of whether or not the appellant and, and this group in particular happens to be very nice, good people who want to, want to just be able to exist. And so, you know, when they feel like they're up against the wall, uh, by people who are, um, trying to force certain things on them, um, no, I think, I think the board should step up and say, you know, "We're not gonna, we're not gonna put a condition on you that we would never ask, we would never force on anybody else." And, uh, I think that that's where we kind of get into the conversation of discretion versus nondiscretion. Um, the proposed, the proposal before us to get rid of different setbacks and all this stuff, that just takes out all discretion altogether, which then people don't need the BMZA, which is probably a good thing at this point. But the, but the reality is, is historically the BMZA used to weigh, you know, what the community's saying, what the neighbors are saying and such, and then make an informed decision. But I just, I would think that if somebody came with conditions and was forcing it upon a church or forcing it upon a mosque or forcing it upon a synagogue, that the board should say, you know, "We've never done that before and we shouldn't, you know, put that encumbrance on you and make you feel like you have to accept this stuff, otherwise you're not going to be able to operate." And so I just, I, I just think that if we're, you know, there's a lot of new precedences being set and it just, i- it seems like there's a pattern here and that's very concerning to me.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schleifer.
Could I respond in just like two sentences to that?
Sure.
Yeah, so I, I just wanted to clarify that the list of conditions, like I said before, was provided by the school and not by a neighbor or an opponent, it was provided by the school themselves as proposed conditions for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Parker, you're going to close us out.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I know we've had conversations, a part of the adjustments to the code that, that we've referenced a few times here and kind of continuing to make sure the code is, is helpful, is flexible, is clear. Um, and it comes back to the volume situation too. I know, for example, there's a bunch of things that come as conditional use that you've raised and others have raised, uh, other council members, other members of the BMZA, um, that say really they shouldn't be conditional use, right? This should be a by-right situation or things like that. Um, what's the current, if, if we're able to ballpark percentages of the business that comes before you all, what's the percentage of, of, uh, of the different types, whether that's a variance, whether that's, uh, conditional use, whether it's a rezoning? And, um, and how do you see those changing based on changes we've already made or changes that we are considering? Uh, how's that shifting and, and what would that mean for the work of, of the board?
Yeah, that, that is a, a good question. I'm just giving estimates off the top of my head, so I could be mistaken. But from my kind of evaluation of it, um, it's about half conditional uses, half variances. But very often a conditional use will come with a variance, usually a parking variance. Um, so it, let's say, um, there's a school or a church that might be a conditional use in a particular, uh, zoning district, they would apply for the conditional use but also need a parking variance oftentimes. Um, so sometimes it's a combination. Um, so, yeah, I would say overall it's about half and half, um, conditional uses to variances. And then, um, the question about how the, the caseload will change, um...
I'm calling for some speculation here, but...
Yeah. You certainly are. And, um, no, I, I was looking over, because you asked me this question a few days ago and I was thinking about it, I was looking over the docket for our upcoming hearing on Tuesday. And none of the cases that we have on the docket, um, that are variances would be solved by the, the council members' bill that's the one that's pending. Um, but we only have maybe like seven or eight of them. There could be a future docket where many, several of them would be by right under, um, Councilmember Gray's bill. So, um, it's hard for me to say right now how it will be impacted.
But I would say that the, the work of the council to simplify the code, um, and, uh, both around variance and conditional use, I could potentially, one of the outcomes would be to limit the volume of things that actually need to be heard and then potentially, uh, help continue to improve the functioning of the board, that, that the cases that really come there are ones that really need the attention and expertise of your staff and of the board members.
Right. And I've been thinking about, uh, or looking at other cities and how many cases they tend to hear in a certain afternoon. I was looking at Detroit, for example, which has a similar, similar population to ours, but obviously their built environment is very different. And they have one or two cases on a docket.
Okay.
And we have about twelve on, on a normal docket right now, they're a little shorter. Um, and then if I look in the counties, Howard County, they have like one case scheduled at a time. Um, so this idea that we should be having forty cases on a docket just because we used to be is, is not, it's not, um, really makes sense when we look at other cities, but then when you, if you look at Boston, which has a similar zoning issue to us in that there, they've relied heavily on variances and been slow to change their code, they have a very heavy docket there. So it, it really varies significantly. I don't know if that directly answers your question, but I think I might have gone off in a tangent, but...
I really appreciate it. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Schleifer?
Thank you. Uh, just, just my last question. Um, since you've, since you became the executive, uh, that one, since you became the director of the BMZA, um, you know, I just asked you about your position on whether or not you thought the board was pro or anti-development, you couldn't really answer that. And so I'm just going to ask you specifically for, you know, what your approach is, because when watching the deliberations, it seems that you do weigh in heavily, um, and your opinion, um, weighs very heavily on the board. Um, they seek guidance from you. Uh, and somebody sent me something which is, is quite troubling and it was done since you've been the exec, since you've been the director, so hopefully you can put some clarity on this, uh, regarding a tweet where you said, "Are we being made to ask to believe that businesses are making decisions about where to expand based on who they run into a pool party in Vegas?" Now, that, what you're referencing is one of what I believe to be probably one of the most productive, um, venues where business leaders from across the city do actually make plenty of decisions about where to put their grocery stores, where to put their businesses. A lot of decisions are being made, a lot of meetings are happening there. So, you know, that gives off the impression that you personally are anti-development. So couldn't you just ex, explain whether or not you are anti-development and what you mean by that tweet?
I don't have a Twitter account, um, so I don't really know what that is, but, um...
You didn't, you didn't tweet this?
I, I don't know what, what you're looking at, but it doesn't really matter.
Is your Twitter handle, was it @WittBecky?
Thank you, Director. We are now in recess. We're going to be coming back at six o'clock for Fine Department Office of Emergency Management.